And ask that you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is as applied by the United States of America. And we are a common, one nation, a free and open, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you, and will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Knutson?
Here.
District One, Morissette?
Here.
District Two, Broca?
Here.
District Three, Bernard?
Here.
District Four, Wyland?
Here.
District Five, O'Malley?
Here.
District Six, Burchill?
Here.
Okay, at this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. If there's anyone here who would like to address the council tonight about any item that's not on tonight's agenda, but that might have an impact on the City of Hudson or come before the council for a future agenda, this is your time to come up to speak. You can come up to the podium and address the council right now. Is there anyone here who would like to speak tonight? Then we'll move on to our consent agenda items. Will you read those for us, please?
To approve the regular meeting minutes of August 17th, 2009. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $704,524.54. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and on the city's website. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B retailers license to the Hudson Hockey Association to sell beer at their pig roast event September 25th through 27th, 2009, at 1820 Hanley Road. To approve designating the following community events to allow exemptions for direct sellers: Hudson Hilltop Pumpkin Party, October 24th; Light Up Night, November 27th; Candlelight Stroll, December 4th; Raindeer in the Park, December 5th; and the Hudson Hot Air Fair, February 5th through 7th, 2010. To approve the reclassification of the municipal court clerk to administrative assistant one position, grade 14, Level F, at $20.36 per hour. To place on file the quarterly reports of the Parks and Public Works Director and the Wastewater Director and the Community Access Board minutes of August 25th, 2009. That is all.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
We have a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
So we have a motion and a second on those items. Roll call vote, please.
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Burchill?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Broca?
Yes.
The consent agenda items are approved. We'll move on in our agenda to the next item, which will be the applications for operators' licenses. The Finance Committee recommended approval of all those listed on the issue sheet, which I will not read all of them. There's both regular operators' licenses here and temporary operators' licenses.
Mr. Mayor, recuse myself.
Mr. Morissette is recused, and Mr. Wyland moves approval. Second. Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Did you? I'm sorry, was there a discussion? Oh, I thought I saw someone raise their hand. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And those will be approved. Next, we've got to review the fuel contract. We've got bids submitted and to consider awarding the 2009-2010 fuel contract. The pricing, I think, was pretty favorable and better than last year. We received three bids. Finance Committee recommended awarding to Yoakum Oil Company the low bidder of the three for diesel at $2.46 a gallon and unleaded at $2.25 a gallon.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve any discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And motion is carried and approved. Next, we've got the request of Sharon Horn Elstrom to amend the premises description on the liquor license to include a deck area for Ellie's on Main at 417 Second Street. I apologize, because we learned in Finance Committee that not everyone had the issue sheet for this in their packet. Did you have one, Randy?
No, not a-
With the map and the picture of the deck?
Yeah.
So you've got it, and you've got it.
Right.
Okay. You've got it.
Just the Finance Committee.
Just the Finance Committee.
Just the Finance Committee.
I-
Okay, so anyway, the Finance Committee did recommend approval. Are there any questions?
I'll move for approval and staff recommendation?
A second.
There's a motion and a second to approve discussion.
I plan to vote for not approval for a couple of reasons. I think there may be more, but just two that I'll discuss right now. One is that this would be an open deck. The only other open deck downtown that I, of a similar establishment, is at Pier 500. The difference being that Pier 500's open deck, which is, I guess, is really a patio, but, because it's all on one level, but it's elevated from the street, that is nowhere near any residential dwelling. Many yards away from any residents, in fact. This deck is right below and right next to, and next door to residences, renters, who live on the second stories of the buildings adjacent to this, and who would now be subjected to people out on the deck, imbibing and enjoying themselves every night. And I think that's an undue hardship for them. Secondly, as is noted in the paperwork, that there must be a licensed operator or approved manager who has these people in view at all times. If you'll notice by the drawings, there are no windows from the main body of this tavern out to that deck. There is simply one ordinary 36-inch door. And that does not allow for viewing of the people who are imbibing out on the deck. Also, there is egress from the alleyway much harder to police, even if there were to be a person, a bouncer or something. Don't know that that would be a licensed operator, as dictated by state law. But I think that the opportunity for abuse is terrific. For those two reasons, I would vote against this.
Other discussion?
I had a question. When, this is one of the things we brought up in the Finance Committee meeting. Maybe we can have Marty talk to it again. I was assuming and expecting that because this is over a residential area, that the same noise rules that apply downtown in the residential areas would also apply here. That, you know, if the neighbors are having a party and the police get called, they have to be quiet, which includes Friday night, includes whenever there's... Would the same rules apply since this is a downtown neighborhood as in one of the other neighborhoods?
The rules would still apply. The thing is, is that we would give a little bit more leeway in the downtown area versus normal residential area. We do have other establishments that have, Pier 500 has karaoke from time to time, or they'll have a small band on their deck. Or the dibbles, from time to time, will have their back door open. There'll be music coming out from those areas. They do generate some noise and their problems, but we've never gotten calls on them that I can, I'm aware of. And they always shut down by, you know, midnight, 1 o'clock, and then you have those people that are obviously out on the deck, still talking and so forth. So if we did get complaints, I would imagine that's what we would do, is we'd go there and say, hey, you need to quiet it down. The thing with this deck is, is that we're in an alleyway that is not facing any residential area. The only property owner that I know that lives back there, obviously, is Mr. De Bruzy.
He's no longer down there.
He's no longer down there. So, other than the apartment complex, maybe in the 400 block that might have an issue with it, I don't see where we'd get too many calls.
Aren't there apartments above, though, in that area?
There are apartments about maybe half a block down in that area, just between Seasons on the St. Croix and Barker's. There's some apartments in that area.
Mm-hmm.
But they've lived downtown for a number of years, I would imagine. They've generated a lot more street noise than people walking back and forth, and might be generated by this place. But then again, we don't know how many people are going to be on the deck, how much noise is going to be generated by this business.
Well, their plan calls 44 people. So it stays in their plan.
Right. They can hold 44 people.
Also, during Finance, there was the, I think it was Greg, or the, he'd come in and talked about the issues on the back deck, how he plans to handle visibility and the bouncer and carting. Would you like to come up and speak to those, those concerns that Mr. O'Malley brought up?
Well, for the first one-
Why don't you introduce yourself again one more time?
Greg Elstrom, owner of Ellie's on Main. Most of my bouncing staff is licensed. I made sure that they all got their license, so in case there was someone that wasn't licensed bartender, that they would be able to bartend. So I would say, out of the eight, 10 bouncers that I have, half of them are licensed. So I don't see that being an issue for the deck.
Let me stop you and interrupt you right there. If we were to amend this such that we're requiring you to have a licensed operator out there, would that be a hardship for you, or could you do that?
Not at all. I mean, well, first of all, they, there's no bar out there anyway, so they have to come into where the bartenders are at to get their drinks anyway. So, I mean, far as someone getting served out there, they still got to come inside to get a drink.
Okay. Anyway, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, no, so what I was getting at, that, you know, most of my staff is already licensed, even though they're not bartending. And I made sure they all got their license for that reason.
Okay. Come, go ahead.
Cameras. You mentioned-
Yes, I have, I already have a camera back there already in place. I actually also have a camera out front that I let the dispatch use anytime they want. So I, I mean, I'm trying to work with the city on stuff, you know, so, I mean, whatever-
Let me just, let me just review a few of the things we talked about in Finance briefly. So it's a 20-by-40 deck with the stairs down to the alley. At the top of the stairs, there would be a gate or-
A gate.
Closed.
And a door guy.
And a door guy there at all times. Now, I think it would probably raise our comfort level if that was a licensed operator. That isn't in the committee recommendation right now, but it could be added. There is a six-foot-high-
Railing.
What will we call that? Is it, it's not a railing?
Well, it goes up four feet, like a standard railing, then there'll be like a foot and a half gap, so, thinking if they want to put their drink on there, they can, and then it's another extension of, of two feet.
All right, so the question-
For that, for that reason, I have a young-
The question of falling over, you're trying to address by having it a higher-than-standard-
Correct.
-railing. The question of noise, I mean, we did discuss this, and the chief quoted the ordinance to us, and what was it again, chief? Unnecessary?
Unnecessary.
Okay, the way our noise ordinance goes is it says loud and unnecessary noise, and this is not something that's easy to apply in this situation. I've got some of the same concerns that Scott is, is voicing about the noise. And I said that in Finance Committee, that I think we're starting a new era. This has happened, it, this is being driven. I can't speak for the applicant, but I'm guessing that a lot of our licensed establishments are going to be coming and seeking some outdoor space because of the smoking ban. Okay, they want to be able to have patrons have a place to go outside while they're still on a licensed establishment. You can't leave your drink indoors and go outside, or you're probably going to lose it, or whatever. I don't know what the, what it is, but I think we're going to see a lot of these. And I think we are entering a new era of that, where we have to decide, you know, are we comfortable with the fact that there could be more noise and a different character in these alleyways? That being said, you know, I'm comfortable of trying, like I said, and try it, and you're going to, you told us in Finance that you're not going to have music out there.
No.
So what can you say to, to give us greater comfort about the noise?
I actually, after I talked to you, walked out and talked to Mr. Hartman about the noise and stuff. I mean, you know, whatever it takes, you know, whatever I talk with, over with these guys and what they tell me is what it will be then, you know?
Right. All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Questions?
The, when you mentioned the cameras earlier, your intention is, is that the bartender will be able to see the whole deck and be, was that your intention on the camera, or that's what I understood from-
That's what the camera, well, actually, right now, I mean, I don't have a deck. It was for security reasons out back watching the cars, but I can, I've already talked to the guy that installed it, and he can, it, just, just a simple wire and a monitor, and that'll be a monitor behind the bar where they can, you know, because like I said, on the weekdays, it, you know, it's not as busy as the weekends, so at least on the weekdays, he can, well, at all times, I can see how many people are on the deck, but that was just a third, besides a gate, besides a doorman, there's a camera. I mean, and the camera's already in place right now, so it's just a simple run of wire to a monitor, and they would have no problem seeing who's on the deck.
Any questions?
I mean, if it helps, too, I could actually give the dispatch a password like I did with the front camera, and they can even monitor the back patio if they want to. I don't have a problem with that.
Oh, cool question.
All right. Question's been called, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no.
No.
And the motion carries five to one. Mr. O'Malley voted no. All right.
Thank you.
And we'll do an amendment to your license. Thank you. Next, we've got the application of the Big Ring Flyers Bicycle Club for a temporary Class B retailers license to sell beer at the Oktoberfest event to be held October 2nd and 3rd, 2009, in Lakefront Park, and their request for approval as a community event.
Move for approval.
There's a motion for approval. There a second?
A second.
Okay, I'm seconded. Finance Committee discussed this and had some discussion with the applicant. We were comfortable with the layout and the plan for using the wristband approach for, they've got a fenced, enclosed beer garden, beer area, tent, and the alcohol storage. Those parts seem to be all in order. We did have some discussion about what constitutes a community event, and we learned from the city attorney that we have no definition for that. We also had some discussion about whether this would fall into our large event, which the definition there is if 1,000 people or more are expected to attend. Because this is a new event, the organizers don't expect 1,000 or more. The closest event they've had in the past, they had, we were told, around 200 people. But, of course, they didn't have beer that time. So, we'll see. But I think that we should approve it. Any comments on this?
I would like to ask the mover and secondor if they would add the contingencies as indicated on the committee recommendation. Those specifically are that the licensed operators be approved before the picnic license is issued, and that adequate restroom facilities be provided.
The, the operators' licenses, we have, they have provided documentation that they are registered nonprofit. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Nancy, but as such, they wouldn't have to be pre-approved for the operators' licenses?
They just don't have to take the license class.
Okay.
They'd be temporary.
They'll have the temporary operator licenses.
Okay. And then, the adequate restroom facilities, I think in the past, our approach has been that if we don't expect over 1,000, and if the lakefront, the bathhouse restrooms are open, that, that's enough. Do you wish for there to be satellites? Because I think we should hear from Dogg about that. Do you, do you have a plan for some satellites, Dogg?
Well, let me inter, I'm the one who highly recommended more than two, because you've got beer flowing. People are going to use, they need to use the facilities.
Doggs, the, Big Ring and Flyers, we have six bathrooms coming, portable. So, hopefully, that will take care of it. And if needed, we can get more.
Okay.
Very quickly, I hope.
They will.
On day one, if you don't have enough, you'll have them there by day two.
Well, we plan on using the bathhouse, too. There is, you know, some there, and then we will have portable.
Okay, nonetheless, is it okay with the-
Wasn't my motion.
Who, who made that motion?
This is on the committee recommendation.
You okay that the motion be inclusive-
Absolutely.
-of those contingencies? All right. Do we have a vote yet?
No.
You ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Next is item 10. The Bomar Assessment Maintenance Contract and Job Description Amendments for the assessor-slash-assistant building inspector position. The Finance Committee recommended approval of the contract and the job description.
Move for approval.
A second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Questions or comments on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the contract and position description are approved. And that does it for Finance Committee. We take us to Public Works. Item number one is to review costs for installing streetlights on Hunter Hill Road and to consider a preliminary resolution number 15-09 regarding special assessments for that project. Alan, you want to tell us what your committee decided?
The Public Works Committee decided to install three streetlights at the cost of 20, $3,300, $2,200 for the stoplights, and mailings and publications of $800, and to assess it to 120 parcels each homeowner in that area on Hunter Hill Road. And the cost of the operation of the lights at $250 per year to be assessed to the association. And we recommended approval of that.
Okay, the committee recommendation is to schedule a public hearing to assess the homeowners, to install three additional streetlights.
May I speak to this?
Yes, you may.
Without a motion?
So?
And I've spoken with several of the residents on Hunter Hill Road. They agreed to, to pay for the cost of installation of those additional lights. And I don't want to point fingers back at the city, but the, the townhomes and condos that were put in were put in, in a stepwise fashion. I'm not sure if there was ever a complete plan for lighting presented to the city, and if we held Hans Hagen to that plan. It's a dark street. The residents have agreed to pay for the addition of those three lights. I think it's crazy to bill them $800 to pay for $250 a year in lighting. You know, I think if, if they're willing to put the lights in, my goodness, I think with 120 taxpaying units, we can pay to light them. These aren't the large, you know, cornered streetlights that we see with the long arm that reaches into the street. It's a small, small cost.
Okay.
There's residents here, I know they may like to speak to it, so.
Well, since I gave you the floor, and normally, we would have the committee chair make a motion.
I'll move to approve the recommendation of the Public Works-
You're going to move to approve the Public Works recommendation?
Yes.
Lori's obviously got in mind an amendment to that, I guess.
This is just to schedule a public hearing, isn't it?
Well-
We're not approving anything other than, than scheduling the public hearing.
But we have to decide what we're spending. Alan is suggesting a public hearing for assessments, Lori's suggesting no public hearing for assessments, instead that they'll pay for it, and we'll just pay the lighting, the energy costs. Correct?
I want to hear from the president of the association, but I'm, I'm suggesting that the association pay for the lights, but not the cost to run them.
Okay.
We need a second for my motion.
I'll second.
So we've got a motion for the committee recommendation and a second from Scott. Let me frame the issue as, as I see it. We have a lighting policy, and we provide a light at every intersection. On longer blocks, there will be a mid-block light. And that is the way it is on almost every street. You could go down, for example, Scott's Street, and you could go down Alan's Street, and so on. I mean, that is the way we do it. We pay for the energy costs to do that lighting. That lighting is as much for traffic safety as it is for pedestrian safety. On this block, there are lights down at the ends on the intersections, and there are also two in the middle, which is actually, even though they aren't the big overhead lights, it's already two more lights than, or at least one more light than a lot of blocks have. It doesn't change the fact that the residents would like to have more lighting. And, and obviously, a similar development just to the north has a lot more lighting, and I think you, when you look at the two and walk through the two or drive through the two, you can tell the difference. But if we start down this road, for every neighborhood that wants to have more lighting and have us pay for more lighting, then I think it's kind of a slippery slope, because how are you going to stop? You know, in your neighborhood, for example, Lori, there are no sidewalks, and I, I mean, when you say this is a dark street, I mean, I'd challenge you to get a light meter out and say it's any darker than your street. Where the pedestrians are actually on the road surface, not off on a sidewalk.
We also don't have 120 units on a block of Laurel Avenue. I mean, it's a high-density area. There's no question about that.
Okay.
I guess I'd like to, if-
Sure. We can hear from them, but here's the decisions we need to make. Number one, is it a public matter for the city to be involved with, or is it really a private matter? And if it's a public matter, and we're deciding that we have a different lighting standard than we've had in the past, and I think we need to write some different lighting standard, because we have not written a standard for the city that has to do with pedestrian safe lighting on every block. So that's, that's the one question. The next question is, you know, when requests for special lights come from different neighborhoods, then does the city pay for the ongoing electricity cost of them? Seems as though we would. So there you go. Now, Mr. Troyer is here, representing the Homeowners Association. So Ron, why don't you tell us what you really think is the best solution?
Okay, Ron Troyer, 1721 Hunter Hill Road. When this became an issue for us, who are homeowners on Hunter Hill Road, it's evolved over the last 10 years. First, let me say, there was a mistake made 10 years ago. There's no question. The developer did not install streetlights to a standard which we, we were advised at the last Public Works meeting, was every 300 feet. And the city was part of that mistake, because the developer had to post a bond. And that bond had, was given back to the developer when this area was finished, and the city had to sign off on that. So the city was a part of this. So over the last 10 years, what's happened is that Hunter Hill Road has become a thoroughfare that was not anticipated, I think, when this was developed. Just as Grandview is a thoroughfare, Grandview, which is 300 feet longer than Hunter Hill Road, has 17 stoplights in Stone Pine. Streetlights. Thank you. 17 streetlights in Stone Pine. On Hunter Hill Road, which is just a bit shorter, we have two streetlights that were installed. As the, it has developed, this has become a public safety concern. So our, we came to the Public Safety Committee first, told them of our concerns of public safety, and they voted unanimously that it was a concern, and sent it to Public Works to be taken care of. So our issue is not whether it's private lighting, our issue is public safety. We went to Public Works, and Public Works, a couple of meetings, sent it back to us, and the recollection of what happened at the last Public Works meeting is not at all what I have. The motion that was discussed was that the residents on Hunter Hill Road would be assessed for the installment of the streetlights, which was $2,500, about 20 bucks per household. That was it. And we were also told that the, the cost of those operational lights, it was suggested that that would be assessed by special assessment to each homeowner. Then I got a copy of the proposed fact sheet that you have today, and- Then I got a copy of the proposed fact sheet that you have today and read through it. And it says that the charge would be set up on an annual billing to the association. At no point in this process has that ever been discussed. And I want to tell you now that Stone Pine Two Townhouse Association, which represents 96 of the 120 homes, will not accept responsibility for paying for the operational cost of streetlights. That is a city obligation, it's a public safety thing, that's what we pay taxes for. And there is a question of, and having been on the city council, this would be an incredible step to take out of the realm of what we pay for in general funds. It would be a precedent that's unheard of, as well as a question of fairness. There's fairness involved in here. Why should we pay additional dollars, which could be viewed as taxation, to have streetlights, which we need for public safety on our street? This has just gone way beyond anything we ever envisioned as homeowners on Hunter Hill Road. We simply want to create a more safe environment. We were told there was a public policy, a city policy of streetlights every 300 feet. We've got three-eighths of a mile, and if you're viewing Hunter Hill Road as one block, then you're just not looking at it correctly. There are 120 homes on Hunter Hill Road between Grandview and Wisconsin. That is high-density housing. In that same area of street in the city of Hudson, you may find 45 homes. So we have lots of traffic, we have lots of concerns about public safety, and I'm asking you to rethink this. And other residents may choose to speak if they like.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll withdraw my motion.
You're withdrawing the motion?
Yep.
Is that all right with the seconder?
I have no choice.
Oh. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, is there a document saying we have that 300? Do we have that?
It's the first I've ever heard of it.
No. It does not exist.
All due respect to Mr. Troyer, my comments were, as there's no streetlight policy in the city of Hudson, that the general guideline the city uses, due to the gridiron pattern in the older parts of the city of Hudson, is approximately 300 feet. That was my quote.
Does that come down to be one at each intersection and approximately one in the middle?
The old gridiron system, which is in the northwestern part of the city, yes, that's approximately it.
Okay. Well, and then our usual way of lighting is the large wooden pole with an arm that comes out, and it's really as much designed for kind of general street safety as it is for pedestrian safety. Is that the kind of light that we're talking about installing here?
Not to my understanding.
These are decorative pedestrian-based lighting?
Correct. More pedestrian-friendly.
Okay, so the...
One of the questions I had at the last meeting was the compare costs between the the street kind of lighting and the decorative lighting. And I thought I heard that the trade-off was identical in the cost to operation, or less. But I'd like confirmation, what is the, what is the cost comparison?
The representatives from Excel said the cost was very similar. They preferred not to use the wooden poles in residential area.
Mm-hmm. Okay, Randy?
This seems like we're complicating it a lot harder than it should be. And I would have to agree with Lori on the direction we should take. It sounds like there's a little bit of both fault. The city didn't take the proper actions at the time, or whatever. And I would agree with Lori in moving that we let the homeowner association pay for the lights and the city take over the annual bill. Betty would tell us if that's feasible. It just seems we're making this a lot harder.
Was that a motion, Randy?
Yes.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. How about it, Betty? Does that fly?
That's a lot easier than billing 120 homes annually for 20, 50 cents.
All right. Alan, what do you say to that? Does that seem reasonable?
I don't think we should put the stoplights in.
At all.
At all.
Even if they pay for them privately, you don't think we should pay for them?
I think either it's all or nothing, either...
Scott, what do you think?
I think the committee recommendation was to schedule a public hearing to discuss this, and I think that's what we ought to do.
It was to discuss the special assessments.
Mm-hmm. And I think we ought to discuss that after a public hearing, as the committee recommended. We don't have to decide this tonight. And we have given no notice of a public hearing on this issue, and I think we ought to.
Well, that might be a good point.
City Attorney, what say you?
Well, you have, if you're going to special assess it, you have to have a public hearing. I mean, you can't do it without the public hearing. The billing issue is kind of separate. You assess the cost of installation, how you bill the ongoing lighting cost is a separate issue.
May I address that issue for just a second? I think that we might have consensus on the billing issue. If the planned residential development plan at the time had included the mentioned lights, they would have been included in the cost of the homes that the developer sold. And the people involved who bought the homes would have been paying for these lights, no matter what. The city would then have taken over the maintenance of these lights, as we do every other streetlight in the city. And so I think that what we're really talking about is a simple assessment for the cost of the installation of the lights, and not the six dollars and 97 cents per household, per year. But that is to be decided at a public hearing.
But doesn't, don't we have to say the public hearing will be on?
Sure.
One thing or the other?
And if we wish to forego the annual fee, we can do so.
Well, okay, you know, I agree with what you said, and I don't think I could have said it as well. Up until the very last part, where you said that it should be assessed to them, because they should have paid for it and would have paid for it had we all been on the same page and had a better plan, then you would have ultimately paid for it through the cost of your home. I mean, that is how it works, is the developer puts it in up to the agreed-upon standards. The city takes it over, but the developer pays for it and passes those costs along. Am I right about that?
That would be correct, Mr. Mayor, and here's what we don't know. How do we know that we weren't billed for those lights and they weren't put in? It's very likely that Hans Hagen had figured in putting lighting, and the miraculous appearance of two of those lights happened overnight, sort of at the end of the development. We don't know that we didn't pay for those lights to be installed. Maybe we did, maybe we didn't.
But we still come back to this question, then. You can either pay for the installation through through your association voluntarily, and we'll take them over. We can special assess through that whole process, which adds costs and hearing and publication and so on. And if you'd rather do it that way, I suspect that's where Scott is going, is we should do it that way. Or we should at least have a hearing on doing it that way. Or we can just put it on the general, overall city taxpayers, under the assumption that we were somehow complicit in, you know, or negligent in doing it in the first place. My preference would be if your association just paid for them right now, and we took over the paying the freight on them.
And we can't answer that question, because there are two associations that have homes on that street. I only represent one of them. There's another association that represents 24 homes. We've not had conversation with them about their desires to install the additional lighting. So I don't know the answer to that.
All right, so we had a motion and a second. And Randy, your motion was to have them pay for it and we'd take over the electric bill on it?
Correct.
Who hasn't spoken and has got something more to say here?
Do we have the original plans? We're talking about what should have been there, or what perhaps he paid for and wasn't installed? And I think we talked about that at one of the Public Works meetings, if we had those original plans.
We don't have access to the plans. I only have hearsay evidence of that, that someone who bought a home said did see the plans and there were more streetlights. But there should be plans on file of the development as it was, we went through the stages, that should show something. If it doesn't, then they weren't there.
There's no streetlights shown.
Yeah, so...
So at the time the council approved it, there were no streetlights shown?
One.
Okay.
Back at that time, I think Stone Pine was the first planned residential development that we did. And typically, what we, the staff and Excel Energy was working on getting lights in, and that's the way, the way it functioned at that time.
Okay.
Can I ask a motion clarification? So the motion is, the 2,500 dollars for the streetlights, 800 dollars for publication, 3,350, public hearing for 3,350 to be assessed back to the homeowners. Is that correct?
Yeah, unless they were coming up with a contingent plan after talking to the second association, they take care of it privately.
But this is what we're talking about for the public hearing, then? Okay, thank you, sir.
Well, okay, wait a minute, Randy. Do you want it to be special assessed, or do you want them to just pay for it privately?
Can't answer that.
If I could address, when you're talking about this special assessment for the, a public hearing for that, to keep in mind that 800 dollars that we have at administrative cost is just covering the mailings and the copy cost. It doesn't include staff. So for just to do the public hearing itself will be 400 dollars that the city will incur, just to do the mailing and the publication for the public hearing for special assessment. So they could save themselves 800 dollars if they decided to do it out of the association fees versus through a special assessment.
I think if we postpone this long enough for you to have a, you know, the two different homeowners groups to look at this and say, look, I mean, we're going to pay it either way, and get buy-in from the other group whom you do not represent.
Right.
I'd be surprised if they wouldn't go for it. If they won't go for it, then I go back to the question of, well, okay, then, you know, is there really a big safety concern there?
And we'll have conversation with them. Just let me say something about the initial development of this Stone Pine setting. It was looked at seriously, certainly by the city enough, that they put seven fire hydrants on Hunter Hill Road, evenly spaced all the way through there. There are seven fire hydrants on Grandview, which is a longer road. So the city was aware of the public safety concerns. To have overlooked or not held the developer to some standard for street lighting seems to be quite an oversight. And so we're trying to correct that. We're trying to be as helpful as we can, but we do need if the, we would like to save the money and certainly save the city. When I saw this, a charge of 800 dollars, I was astounded, because that didn't come up. But I understand why the city incurs cost to do this. If we can save that amount of tax dollars, if we can reach an agreement with the other association as to how this might be done, we'd like an opportunity to do that.
I'd like to withdraw my motion and move to table this issue.
Postpone.
Postpone, until our next scheduled council meeting. Hopefully have an agreement with them to come back to our next meeting, and then we can take the issue up.
Could we also, part of that, go to safety to see how many accidents we've had in that area? Has there been some, has there been some safety issues that are unusual for that particular street? Because I'm not sure that there is.
There actually have been residents who've fallen.
Oh, stop a minute now. They've fallen? So...
Okay.
I'll second Randy's motion.
Well, let's just hold on here a minute, Mr. Troyer. Randy made a motion, he wants to withdraw his motion, now he moved to postpone. A motion to postpone has been made and seconded, and a motion to postpone is debatable. Any discussion on the motion to postpone? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The motion is passed, and we will postpone that item till our next meeting. Or until they have a chance to get their group together. Okay? And you let us know where you're at.
We will.
Okay? And if you can't get agreement, we'll be back to discuss it again, I guess, either way. Okay. That takes care of number one. How about number two, city hall parking lot stairway repair and replacement costs?
Tom?
Tom?
You want to talk about the...
I feel it's important that we do it. We set aside some money in this year's budget, and I told Tom a few weeks ago that I think we've got a safety concern there. The one railing is loose enough that it bothers me. And I told him that I thought we could find some money elsewhere in the budget to get it done this year. And so, am I putting words in your mouth? The committee came, looked at it, you've got a proposal here. Tell us about your proposal.
We received three quotes from different contractors. The low bid came from Stark's Metalworks out of Monomony, which included it for 12,930 dollars, which then another 2,000 dollars for removal. I feel that we should take that bid and will, the city crew can take the steps out. So we'll save 2,000 dollars there.
I have a...
Excuse me?
I had a question, but if you're done.
Funding source will come from 2,000 in capital bonding, and the other 50% will come out of the parking utilities fund.
Yes, Lee?
Well, looking at the stairs, I'm wondering if it's a railing issue and a couple of repair issues, why do we have to tear them out? Why can't we, why can't we take the railings out, drill in new railings, which would cost a whole lot less than 12,000 dollars?
If you look at the pictures on your issue sheet?
Yep.
There's a lot more issues with those than just the railings. The rebar is exposed on the backside, underneath side, the concrete's spalling, the railings are loose. I felt that they're not safe at all, or, you know, they're going downhill very fast.
I'll move for approval on committee recommendation.
Second. All right, there's a motion and a second for the committee recommendation.
Just clarification, Tom, is that 50-50? Your recommendation is all out of capital, just so we have clarification.
The recommendation is that it be paid for out of the capital projects bonding for this year.
2,000 in capital bonding project. And 50% from the parking utility fund.
Oh, and 50%...
I believe the committee recommendation was they install community, see if there was money available, which was what my issue sheet was. And Tom came back with a recommendation that the council consider a 50-50 split, half from the capital projects, half from parking.
Unless the parking utility would like to pay 100%?
I'll move the 50-50, or I'll amend my motion for the 50-50 in that motion.
I'll second that again.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number three, Foxglove Way sidewalk improvements. Got an issue sheet on this, the committee recommended. Alan?
Just that we have the money available to put the sidewalks in. The money's been sitting in escrow account, and we recommend that we put them in. Put the sidewalks in.
I will, if that's a motion, I will second it, and also like to comment that this is being paid for by the home association. Previous developer, I'm sorry.
Who undoubtedly passed his costs along to the homeowners, as we previously discussed. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Anyone else have comments on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. And that motion carries. We'll get that sidewalk put in this year, you ought to believe, right, Tom? Should it happen this fall?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Park Board, review costs for demolition of the silo at White Camp Park. Last year, the park board had requested money to paint and renovate the silo. And I removed it from the budget, because I was looking for things to cut, and I didn't see the value of it. If you feel differently about that, this is your time to speak up. But otherwise, we're going to remove that silo.
That's certainly a waste of a good structure, to remove it rather than replace it. This certainly is something that could be converted into something useful in the future.
It's in danger of falling over.
Well, for 900 dollars, you can fix it so it doesn't fall over. I mean, I don't see the huge benefit in tearing out a structure that was thousands of dollars of investment for a 900 dollar repair.
What might we use it for?
As you develop that park, it could be easily turned into a, oh, I don't know, a place for, like a place for serving from. It could be used for storage, it could be used for, you know, as creative as you can be. It's a structure that's a sound structure.
It's a structure for graffiti and problems to happen, I would assume, and just be done with it. If you paint it, it's going to get graffiti.
And so is our bathhouse downtown.
So is everything.
Right. So I'm not sure that that's a, I just look at it as, you know, part of this historic area, you tear it down, it's gone. historic area, you tear it down, it's gone. So the investment to build it is gone. Can we be creative in repairing it and reusing it as some structure that's valuable for storage or valuable for something else?
But what we must keep in mind, that painting it is not on the agenda for tonight. It's just whether or not to repair the hole in the silo itself and to try to make it safe. It is not safe now.
It's not safe, and the park board recommendation is to accept the bid in the amount of two thousand two hundred and forty dollars for removing the silo at White Camp Park. Could be noted that the vote was for, in favor of that recommendation, and one against, and the one who was opposed disagreed with the removal of a significant historical structure from the parks.
And I'm not on that board. It wasn't me voting that way, but I would agree with that vote.
I'd like to point out, Lee does have a point that, at the time that we put other structures on that adjacent property, our, our water utility, it was deliberately done, designed and built to look in as prairie farm architecture, and the silo does fit in with that. If we're going to keep it, we've gotta make it safe.
I agree with that, and I think, you know, Lee, having spent some time on the inside of concrete silos, I have a hard time envisioning what we will, you, repurpose that for, for those of you that have. And there's not enough space in there to really do much. I mean, it's tall, granted, but right now, I think it's beginning to be an attractive nuisance, and in its unsafe condition, we hate to have kids crawling through the hole or whatever and, and getting in there. We, we, we run the risk of, of problems. So we neither, either need to make it structurally sound and off limits, or we need to do your whole nine yards of remodeling it into something that's both safe and usable. I can't envision what.
I can't say whether or not your experience with silos and mine were the same, but these are mold incubators, and you do not want your children inside them.
Yeah, the other ones, the way I've seen these repurposed is repurposed as observatories or used, used by the high schools to create, you know, that's a nice area where there isn't a lot of light out there, someplace. You could create it in something useful.
I will move to recommend removal of it for twenty-two, four.
Okay, so there's a motion to accept the recommendation of the park, park board?
I'll second.
Randy, was that what you meant?
Yep.
Yep, and there's a second. Any further discussion?
I agree with Lee that I, I think it is an historic, uh, uh, structure. I cannot go along with any possible thought of use of it in the future. Lee's mention of other communities' use would be an attractive alternative, but very expensive, I think. And there is a problem with mold in these things, and you'd constantly have to keep it clean. I don't know that we can use it. I hate to tear it down, but it's unsafe standing. So I think we're gonna have to tear it down.
Anyone else? Comments?
I guess my only question is, is this a recent observation? This deficiency in the structure, or has it been like that far?
It's been deteriorating for some time. Tom, what do you know about what, what's, what's been the trend up there? I mean, is it, is it, is it actively getting worse?
Yes, sir. We've tried to fill it in with dirt last couple of years now, and it keeps washing in, and kids try to dig through the dirt, and they're getting down in there, and we keep, we had some orange plastic safety fence up there for a while that looked so unsightly. We tried the black dirt again because the safety fence just looked terrible up there. So then we put more dirt on there, and as you see with the pictures, the hole is starting to get larger again. So it's kind of a continual maintenance currently with the big hole in there, so...
Tom, can I ask you a question about that? Would not, is it your opinion that nine hundred and thirty dollars for repairs would stop this deterioration, or would we continue to have problems elsewhere around the base of this structure?
That cost was to repair the, the hole in the structure.
That hole?
Yes.
Do you think that that would then make the structure safe, or are we going to be looking at having to repair other areas of, of the foundation?
Currently, the rest of the structure looks fine.
Okay. Tom, is there enough roof or top on there that it's keeping water out, or is it part of the problem that there's water and free slot going on down the base?
Um, actually, the, um, there is an opening toward the top where the water does come down in that area.
Well, what are you recommending? Put you on the spot.
You didn't, you didn't warn you about that, did I? Take a minute. I guess I feel that it's a safety issue currently the way it is. It's just kind of a maintenance thing for the city. It's going to be a continual maintenance thing for the city. I don't see this being used as a, like a facility or anything like that. It'd be other safety issues, I believe, with, with opening that up with a stairway or some form, so it's, I, I would recommend removal of it. I don't see any significance of that silo in that area.
Well, Tom, you say the top is leaking, so to repair this silo, it's more than nine hundred and thirty dollars to...
That was just to repair the hole on the bottom part.
Right, and then it's gonna be a water collector at that point, 'cause it'll be containing water, and we'll have efflorescence eating away the concrete from the inside.
Yes, sir.
Okay, other, other questions for Tom, or any other discussion on this item? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
And the motion passes five to one. And that takes us on to update on projects. Tom might be here to answer some questions. Chuck Schwartz is not able to be here tonight because we moved our meeting and we had another previous, previously scheduled meeting. There is, in addition to his regular update, there's also the memo in there about sidewalks at, near Taco John. Maybe you could talk about that a little bit?
It was requested that we look into a sidewalk on intersection of Cooley Road and Eleventh Street by Taco John's. I guess there's, after looking at the, the different options, we were gonna remove part of the curb, curbing in that area, so we could actually, for no cost, do option one, which would just make the curb cut out for the potential, or when we decided to put a pedestrian ramp in there. So I guess we could certainly consider that. Option two would put in a pedestrian ramp. That would include lowering a electrical pull box in that area, and then at least there would be some place for people to stand off the roadway. Option three was to put a pedestrian ramp and a five-foot sidewalk extending to the east. Small retaining wall would be needed. My opinion on that would be that eventually...
Tom, can you stop just for a minute? When this, when this item came up, and the memo really didn't arrive at City Hall in time to be...
Separate agenda item.
A separate agenda item. The packets were already under... Assembly, or maybe even already on their way to being delivered. I put it in because I was hoping that Catherine would allow it under Public Projects, item number two, Eleventh Street Improvements. However, she just whispered in my ear that she does not approve of that, so I think we can't discuss this any further tonight. We're gonna have to take it up at a future, uh, meeting.
How does that impact the work that's currently underway? Are we, do we need a decision in the next few days?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
What, okay, Tom?
Potentially, it's, uh, decision regarding the matter on September eighth would avoid potentially delaying the Eleventh Street project.
Well, but we still have our general two thousand nine sidewalk projects coming up, right? So we're still doing more sidewalk work left, left this year, am I...
But that Eleventh Street is not part of that project. I don't believe.
Well, we do not wanna delay the Eleventh Street project over this, in my opinion. So that I know we can talk about tonight because that's on here. The Eleventh Street project needs to go forward. We wanted to get it done ASAP, and I still want that to happen. What do you think?
I'd like to point out that the concrete work we do for sidewalk, curb, and gutter has to be completed by October fifteenth. That's the city policy. So we, time is short.
Time is pretty short.
Well, I'd like to see this on the next agenda then.
This is pertaining to one of the projects that's on the update?
Number two, Eleventh Street Improvements. And the concern is that we could add it in as maybe a change order to the project, but we, you know, yes, Alan?
Well, where's the sidewalk going? I mean, this is, again, I think we're building a bridge to nowhere. I mean, do we want to have a pro, sidewalk from Eleventh Street all the way up to Target?
Eventually, I think those two should join eventually.
I think that's, there's so many entrances onto Cooley Road there. I have safety concern about letting those people, there's, I don't know, twenty-five businesses there.
They're walking in the street now.
Okay, but now we've gone far afield from the agenda item, which is Eleventh Street. That I'm not going to allow. I think we need to put this on a future agenda, and if it doesn't get done this year, then it'll have to be done another year, so, but that's just the way it is. It didn't come to us in time for tonight's.
Would you feel that it'd be appropriate then to include the, the curbing cutout for a pedestrian ramp then? See, I don't.
It's zero additional cost anyhow.
I think pedestrian ramp, we get people who are waiting to cross the street out of the street.
Mm-hmm.
And give them a place to stand, and this is part of the Eleventh Street projects.
Yes, it is.
And it only costs fifty-five hundred dollars. If we were to build a sidewalk, it would cause, uh, cause us to need a retaining wall there, which would be, have to be torn out when we were to put in a Cooley sidewalk completely. I don't think we're, man, we can't discuss that, as Catherine says.
That part, portion that you're suggesting, I think we can.
And I would move at this time, since it is part of this project, that we do allocate fifty-five hundred dollars for the pedestrian ramp construction only, as part of the Eleventh Street project.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
Can we even talk about that?
Yes.
Okay.
Catherine? Can we talk about that?
Yeah, it's something that needs to be done with connection with this project.
I'll, I'll speak against it. I think we need to determine whether or not we wanna spend that kind of money for a sidewalk on a busy area like that. When we talked last time about going on Ward Street for a personal, or a, a walkway, there's a bike path there right now. So if you go a block and a half or two blocks maybe, and then divert the people onto Ward Street, which isn't as busy, would make a whole lot more sense than putting a sidewalk all the way in, in my opinion.
My motion is not for construction of a sidewalk.
Well, by putting the ramp in, I understand that. I think we're, we're saying we wanna have a sidewalk there.
We already have a sidewalk all the way down Eleventh Street that's just painted on the road, and you get to the corner, and you're kinda standing on the hillside trying to wait for the light to change.
All right, anyone else? Randy?
On the west... We're talking about on the east side, excuse me, aren't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the northeast side.
There is a ramp that leads directly on the west side of Eleventh Street, right towards the section we're talking about putting a ramp in. So we're leading them in anywhere anyway, so we...
There's a ramp too, I guess is my point.
To get out of the gutter.
Well, when I walk that street, I go down and go across and take in the, in the, there's no place to go there.
I think the answer, in my opinion, to the question of would we ever extend pedestrian pathway to the east from there, is, yeah, we should make some provision for some pedestrian, off-street pedestrian walkway at that portion of Cooley Road, some way, somehow. Does it go all the way to Target? I don't know, and we can't discuss that all tonight. Lori?
Might we just consider option number one, which would involve the curb cutout? There's no additional cost. It would still allow people to get out of the street, up onto the grassy area. In lieu of a plan to extend the sidewalk, why not do, I always like the options that are at zero dollars. Then you, you have some flexibility as you move forward if you, if you go with that option now. Then we, we're not going back and revisiting that curb. Right?
Okay. Anybody else? I think I just heard...
Good thing we didn't have those options for zero dollars. A few years ago, we'd never, would've built a street in the city.
Okay. Nonetheless, there's a motion.
If there's a good reason, Scott, to, to put the...
I, I just wanna get people who are waiting to cross the street out of the street, 'cause the sidewalk is a painted area of the street.
Right.
Right, but option two involves electrical boxes. It just seems like it's unnecessary work.
You know, one accident and fifty-five hundred dollars will steam like peanuts.
Okay, there is a motion. The motion is for option two, to install a curb cut and a pedestrian ramp, a place for people who otherwise may be inclined to stand in the street, at an additional cost of fifty-five hundred dollars. Are we ready to vote on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands if you said yes. That's three. All opposed, say no.
No.
Raise your hand. Those three are three to three. Uh, motion, um, I will vote yes. We had a tie vote, three to three. I vote yes. The motion carries. Let's move on to the report on the public safety building facilities feasibility study, Frisbee Architects. What did I forget? Oh. Hey, can you guys just wait for just a minute? I'm sorry, I went out of order. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. To consider awarding the contract for Cooley Road Melon Overlay Project and approve the final resolution number fourteen dash oh-nine authorizing the Cooley Road special assessments.
Move to suspend the rules.
There's a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on suspension of the rules? All in favor are, will vote by roll call vote.
Morsett?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Burchill?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Brokaw?
Yes.
Okay, we've got six yeses, zero nos to suspend the rules. The rules are suspended towards adoption of the final resolution number fourteen dash oh-nine. So this motion should be to approve the resolution and to award the contract.
Move to approve resolution fourteen dash oh-nine and award the contract to Monarch paving in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Now, we have our report from Frisbee Architects on their study on the public safety building facilities feasibility. We have got several representatives of, of both Frisbee Architects and their partners on this, and Stephen Peterson is here. Maybe you wanna introduce people as, as needed for me, will you? Okay?
Well, I'm Stephen Peterson with Frisbee Architects of River Falls, and I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and obviously is what has led up to us being here this evening. With me is James O'Shea of the Collaborative Design Group, and Mike Jordan of the Collaborative Design Group. And the three of us were the primary players in going through the study, going through the, and putting together the report. As we understand it, we would like that you have reviewed the report, or at least you've had it in your possession for some time, and so we certainly don't wanna go through it line by line, but we'd like to just touch on some key items in there that we discovered, and some recommendations, and then open it up, I think, for some, any questions and such. So I'd like to thank Devin for getting this set up, and Devin, I may have to holler if I, I need your help, but hopefully we'll get this going here, so...
On screen, there we go.
And again, I think I can say, you know, if, if you wanna interrupt with a specific question as we go through here, if I'm going through too fast, or else we can just do the whole thing and come back to any page, too.
Let me interrupt you for one procedural matter. Normally, we have any document that we have, if a member of the audience here requested to see it or have a copy, we'd provide it to them. Do you have any extra copies of this report with you tonight?
I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to request that Devin go make photocopies? You've wanted to see it, or you wanna see it during this discussion other than what's on the screen? So we can get a feel for how many copies he's gonna make. Does anyone want a copy? Okay, Devin, then you don't have to go make copies. If you do, maybe I can lend you mine.
I can also make copies tomorrow.
So we can get a feel for how many copies he's going to make, does anyone want a copy? Okay Devin, then you don't have to go make copies. If you do, maybe I can lend you mine.
I can also make copies tomorrow.
Well, the report is broken into several sections, the section number one is kind of a background and maybe the meat of it, some recommendations, and then the several sections that follow is a lot of supporting information, in terms of some of the programming effort and preliminary design concepts that were put forth. This evening, I'm going to just focus on section one, and then I'm going to have James and Mike look at some of the other sections there, and we can come back together with some questions and such. But again, my thought is, unless you have specific things that you want to hit upon immediately, I'd like to just go through the report and touch on some key things that we discovered, so. So just as a means of introduction, as most of you are aware, there was an ad hoc committee that was together last year, and they made a recommendation to expand the police, fire, and EMS department facilities based upon physical need, and the council, if you're, correct me if I'm wrong Devin, but the council came back and recommended that an outside consultant be hired to basically confirm that or not confirm that, to look into it in greater detail. And so that was our task here. The other part of the task is, as you see in the first paragraph there, is to help the city of Hudson make critical decisions to prepare the city's police department, fire department, and St. Croix EMS for their space needs for the next thirty years. And so our hope here is that we provided a lot of information with the assistance of a lot of city staff, that's going to lay some foundations for that. We looked at a number of things in terms of growth and such in the community, as we're all aware, St. Croix County has been a very fast-growing county, the city of Hudson has been very fast-growing for a number of years, this is not a new phenomenon. What we also discovered, at least in terms of the reports that were out there a few months ago when this was begun, is that this trend, even though the economy obviously has affected the growth here, this trend hasn't stopped. The predictions, at least, that were put together in the last decade, were projected out for thirty and forty years. And so what we're looking at is not just, you know, the growth that we've witnessed in the last ten or twenty years, but the estimates that are going to go forth for the next ten or twenty years. So again, even though the economy may have impacted home growth, for example, or industry growth, there's certainly some growth that is anticipated for this community and the outline area. One thing to note on this section also is that obviously the public safety departments provide a lot of services to the outlined communities. We do acknowledge that, you know, there's the potential for those, some of those communities to go and get services from other means. I don't know with the length of the contract that they have with the city, but obviously that might be the one caveat that we see in terms of, you know, the quantity of space and service that may be needed. But again, that's a huge unknown at this time, at least as far as we know, so. I'm going to jump ahead a little bit here, page three, we get into department programming, and page four, existing facility review. As you're well aware, police is downstairs here, and fire and EMS is across the street from us, and I think, you know, we certainly see very quickly upon entering the police department, the findings of the ad hoc committee report, and we certainly stand in agreement, at least in a general sort of way, with the findings of the report that are indicated in the report, both for all three departments, but most notably for the police department, which again is in what the report, the ad hoc report said. One of the, a couple of the things noted in this section right here, is that not only are we looking at the community growth, that is very evident, which has a direct translation to the amount of growth of public safety services, but there's also been some regulatory and industry-wide changes that have mandated larger equipment. Some of the discussions we had with fire and EMS in particular, said, you know, obviously the bays that are across the street here are made for smaller equipment, and that's again, very evident. Well, why is that? It's not just because we like big vehicles, it's because the vehicles have to get larger to house all of the EMS equipment and medical things that are needed for them to serve the community. We also noted that the buildings themselves have been relatively well-maintained, I think that it's, you know, significant that the building across the street is still being well-used after thirty years. Again, that was kind of our charge to try and forecast and look into the next thirty years, but we can also see that the building not only was outgrown physically before that thirty-year period was up, but again, you know, just this idea of the bays being too narrow and other restrictions on the building that ideally would have been addressed at an earlier time. So I guess the point of that is to say that, you know, we're going to provide you with as much information as we reasonably can for the future thirty years, but who really knows how that's going to transition? I think, you know, the people who constructed the building across the street did the best they could with what they knew at that time, it served well, but, you know, again, it was partially outdated, not just in the last year, but several years ago, in terms of its size and such. There's the bottom of this page here, we began to talk about the relationship of the departments to each other, and also to the rest of the city staff, and I think that there was kind of an underlying theme, is that there's obviously some benefit in the facilities being right next door to City Hall, being right next door to each other, that there's obviously some shared facility use in this building, just in terms of, you know, the convenience of public use, toilets and things of that nature, entryways and so on. But the departments are substantially independent in terms of their operations from other city entities. The caveat to that is that we saw a very strong collaboration between fire and EMS. We also recognize that there's a growing collaboration between police and fire and EMS. Our recommendation for City Hall, just in a very brief summary here, and we'll get into a little more detail of this, is that the police department definitely needs to expand, and as we'll see in the pages ahead, there's no space to logically do it in this building or on this property. Moving on to page five, again, a little summary of the public safety building, it's in, you know, quite good shape right now, and, but again, there's, there are some restrictions in terms of how it's being used, it's not just a matter of the physical space. And I guess I could say that about the police department too, it's not just an issue of the physical space there, but it's the building construction type, for example, is there some security issues by having what is basically conventional office construction for a police department, specifically, you know, lower-grade windows in terms of, you know, safety and security, and some of the other security issues that are evident upon coming into the police department. We talked about how the existing public safety building, again, is very usable, it's just a question, is it able to be, continue to be used for a long period of time for, as the primary station? And again, you've probably seen in the review, in the report, that we're recommending that it could work very well as a substation, a downtown substation, but our recommendation is its useful life as the main station is quite limited. Site analysis has indicated, we looked at actually a little over thirty sites, I believe, and we narrowed them down based on a variety of criteria, size being perhaps the most obvious one, though the size of all of them could have supported a police department in some form, there was very little opportunity for, I shouldn't say very limited, but somewhat limited opportunity for redevelopment of existing buildings. And I think that was one of the questions that we were asked, you know, what's the logic of redeveloping, for example, one of the existing commercial buildings that's available for sale? And in terms of remodeling it, and again, if that's, you know, of a lower-grade office caliber, does it make sense to think about a police department being there, and what are the options for expanding upon that? So we went through a variety of criteria, which narrowed down the sites. We came away from that whole portion of the study with some sites that made sense for just the police department, others that made sense for fire and EMS, as the police also being a part of that, and then also the fire and EMS substation idea. Very briefly, we assumed that a new facility would be on one site, but that's not, or excuse me, on one level, but that's not to say that that would be the preferred design option, it was simply a matter of that's what we needed to do to narrow down the site selection a little bit. But there were some exceptions that, you know, we noted where a multiple-level building might make some sense for the police department, and possibly for fire and EMS as well. As you've seen in the packet, we did include some plan diagrams, without a specific site, those are glorified bubble diagrams, if you will, giving an indication of the square footages and likely arrangement of spaces. Cost issues, you know, we certainly were not negligent of considering those, but I guess in terms of, you know, trying to narrow down the sites, one of our first considerations was the fact that we have a volunteer fire and EMS departments, and so the response time was critical, and so something of that nature was the very first thing that we looked at, in terms of coming before most other issues. City asked us to look at various recommendations, no new facilities, upgrading current facilities, constructing new, or combinations of the above. As you see in the consensus there, our recommendation is that we either construct or upgrade what exists, and again, police department, our sense is that there's not the physical space to make that happen on-site. Fire and EMS, again, probably fairly limited opportunity for expansion on that site unless the part of the public safety parking lot is used for that, which, you know, we understood was maybe something to be discussed, but not a strong possibility. And then the question was, is if the police department vacate the space here, what could that space be used for? One possibility is possibly a portion of the EMS services, but again, is that, you know, I think that's something for the city to weigh out if there's some other need for that space. So then we looked at several specific sites, several recommendations. The police department, one of the existing commercial spaces that we did think was a possibility for redevelopment is the NMC office building on First and Vine. We recognize, of course, it didn't meet the total area that we had talked about, but again, that area that we talked about was for a green space, or outside of downtown. So the fact that the NMC property has very reduced setbacks and is a multi-level building, we thought made it a possible candidate to house all of the police department's activities. We do not recommend it for the fire department, and it could conceivably be used for EMS, however, then that would break up the relationship that EMS and fire currently have. In addition to that particular site, there are several other sites that worked for fire and EMS, and all of those sites, as indicated, also work for police, to be either perhaps a separate entity on that site, or else part of a combined entity.
I have a question, you said EMS is a possibility for the NMC building, but I thought the garage heights there were too low for the rigs.
That, I think that was one question that we had, there were some rigs that would work in there, Lee, and some that probably would not, so, and I don't, we did not get to the point of measuring heights of that door and such. If I remember correctly, the door would have to be replaced, but I think we had the actual height downstairs, does that sound right Devin, or?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, I'm not positive of that, Lee, that's obviously something that we would have to go into a little more detail on. And I think, you know, relative to the, you know, the whole issue of site selection, I think, you know, when we first started the process, we had, you know, an idea that we might come back with, you know, this is the site that we're going to look at and we're going to develop it, or maybe there was two of them. The process of narrowing down the sites became a little bit more lengthy than that, and I think that, you know, at this point, we're waiting for a little bit of feedback, if you will, from the city in terms of how we might proceed with site selection and narrowing it down even further. So you can see five of the sites that we did look at there, that we felt were, you know, viable candidates for, certainly for fire and EMS, and possibly combined with police, and listing out some potential square footages and areas. And then there was also a discussion about possibility of additional substations, assuming that the downtown, the existing public safety building would become a fire and EMS substation. What's the long-term, ten, twenty, thirty years out, do we need to be looking at yet another substation in another location? And I think part of that equation is, is let's assume that this becomes a substation for the moment across the street from us, and then we build a new facility somewhere else, the question is, where is that new facility? Is it located such that a, yet another substation makes sense, or does not make sense? So again, that's, you know, we looked at potential sites, but did not come to any resolution in terms of recommending a specific site at a specific time. And just in conclusion, we did indicate, you know, obviously as a combination of the facilities, there's going to be some savings, both in terms of the actual building itself, in terms of constructing a little smaller building, and if we had separate facilities, there's going to be some savings in the site footprint, because assuming again, that you went to a green space, for example, then presumably we are reducing the amount of driveways, setbacks, things of that nature, so the total site could also be smaller. And then we also believe there would be some economies in terms of maintenance and operational costs as well. With that, I'm going to let Mike and James just kind of touch on a handful of items in the subsequent sections, and then we can have any other questions, unless there's anything specific that you want to touch on right now.
Questions, anyone?
You do mention the NMC building, you just brought that up, and in your paperwork, you mentioned the police department would be the logical candidate for that, is that correct?
As a possibility, correct.
But not taking the entire building?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, now that's not to say that, you know, twenty years from now, do they need to grow into that space?
Sure.
But at the moment, they would not need the whole space.
Thank you.
I had one question for Jim, in here you talked about NMC building, and then expanding across the way and using this building for more of what's going on over there. Outdoor training facility, what, we talked about having a tower in your outdoor training facility for rappelling and doing some other activities, right?
Yes.
And in one of the designs, there was a tower that looked a lot like a silo.
Never say my name.
That's right.
That's good.
I was just spinning that idea.
Have you guys had any training with dynamite yet?
Jimmy, EMS already has a training tower, do they not, up in White Camp Park?
No, we don't.
Well, we used to have a, oh, okay.
Okay, because we had, we'd bought the poles a couple of years ago, we're going to do something and rebuild it up there, right?
Right. The poles are built off of base, they're holes.
It was just a thought, because it's, you know, it's an outdoor training facility, and there's repurpose for reuse, you know. Just put that bug in somebody's ear.
He's back on track Steve, roll his bus.
Okay. Lee, I have to tell you, I whispered that into Jim's ear when you said it, so.
Oh, you did.
I already did.
All right.
I'm going to let James and Mike come up here for a few minutes.
Hi, good evening everyone. I had the honor of working with the police department, so I was mostly centered around police, and I guess I should give you a quick little insight how we did this. We met with the police probably four or five different times on-site, both in City Hall and over at the fire station, and as well, we obtained drawings, we obtained the previous reports that had been done, and drawings that had been done by, I think, other consultants as well, and then we also looked at the demographic studies that had been done on future growth and potential growth, and all of those kinds of things, and then toured the facility. And the first step that we always do is we always take kind of a look at the existing facility and check square footages and such, and your existing square footage in the building, the City Hall building, is approximately sixty-six hundred square feet. Now, that's our gross square footage, so we take that to the outside of the building. The usable space inside the- The usable space inside the police station is about 4,500 square feet. The new program that we did comes up to about 18,000 to 19,000 square feet. But what I'd like you to do is not focus on the square footage, but focus on operational issues when it comes to a police department. And think of it much in terms of how your surgeon might go about doing a surgery on you and how they would prep and prepare for that, and how those steps are important and what they do. The key things that you guys are really missing in your police department, even though it equates to square footage, are operational and function. And it has to do with both the safety of the, well, several safety levels, but the safety of the general public, the safety of the officers at risk, and then the safety of possible assailant or criminal or whatever that case may be, because their safety is important, too. And so there are key pieces to a police station, and it starts with, it starts with how you bring somebody into a key, a police station. And the first is, if you're bringing somebody in a squad, you have to enter a Sally Port. And through the Sally Port, then you enter a holding area. And these are all highly secured areas. Right now, your Sally Port doubles as basically a garage. That's a kind of a no-no in the police world. You don't mix those two together. You don't mix a normal police officer getting out of his car to go to work with somebody who's possibly bringing a criminal in, or somebody that's been drinking too much and might get out of control or something like that. So it's very process oriented. On the other hand, you have the school group with the kindergartners and the first graders coming through the front door who are going to be touring the police facility. And so there's a lot of different circulation routes and mixes within the facility that can happen and that can't happen. Within your current facility, none of that exists. I mean, you can walk the facility and get a feel for that if you really understand how a policeman does their job and how those daily functions can cross over and happen. The second aspect within the police service that's incredibly important is kind of the conviction process, and that has to do with evidence. And without proper evidence storage or handling, those convictions may not occur. And so that's a highly, within new police stations, those areas are highly secured, and there's multiple levels of security to enter an evidence storage area. Whereas in some of the older stations, much like yours, it's not much more than a locked closet, which means anybody with a key, or if the door stands open, or somebody says, yeah, it's down in the evidence storage room, you can get paper cups out of there, that becomes a huge issue, both for the city and for the police department, as well as somebody who's been convicted, if they were wrongly convicted or something like that, or wrongly assumed to be guilty, let's say, or you were trying to process evidence. I think the third level is kind of this idea of public interaction. Keep in mind, people that come into police stations sometimes can be victims of crimes. And they enter through the front door, not the back door. So they don't enter through the Sally Port commonly. Often, they may come to the police station seeking help. So somebody who's been mugged or their car's been vandalized or something like that often come through the front door, and there's got to be a way to handle that. Right now, your station is set up that all of those people come through the same areas. And so it only succeeds by good planning on the part of the police department, meaning that they have to time those events. So in other words, if they've got a kids tour coming through, and they've got somebody coming in in a squad, that somebody in the squad sits out in the car locked up until such time, until the kids clear out of the area. So there are quite a few different areas that operationally just don't work today. So I think beyond just the square footage, your bigger issue is operationally, it just doesn't function. The last thing that I would say with regards to police station and police work is, it's like a lot of businesses today, they really rely on training, today more so than ever. The policemen of the past, and even I'd say the fire service of the past, it was a different sort of training. But today, these people are required to obtain a certain amount of training just to continue their service. And with different types of crime today, there's different levels of training that occur and different kinds of equipment that's used today, including tasers, which we didn't have 30 years ago, and all sorts of other kinds of equipment. It's really important that those people know how to use that. And while it seems almost arbitrary in that you can go obtain training somewhere else, or you can go do this, or you can go do that, it often is not feasible and/or often costs the city more for those guys to go offsite to train. So I would say that that is also a very important part of these guys' daily jobs. Now, there's a number of other elements from locker rooms to where they can, where they can change their clothes so they can come in. One huge issue for police departments everywhere, nationwide nowadays, is getting those squads off of the street and out of back parking lots into garages, and that really is an element of cost of maintaining those things. The squads today typically will have $5,000 or more worth of electronics in them, and they didn't in the past. So what they do nowadays is they leave the squads running outdoors 24/7. So if I bring my squad in the middle of the winter, and I park it outside, and I don't have a place to secure it indoors where it's temperature-controlled, then it just sits there and runs. And that's incredibly hard on those squad cars. And so you have not only the maintenance of the squad itself, but also the electronics that can foul up. So equipment has become much more sophisticated, and that's been driving a lot of this need for indoor parking within squads. But you'll find almost every police department nowadays looking at either remodeling or building new stations. One of their primes will always be, primary elements will be to get their squads indoors. So with that, I'm going to turn over the mic to talk a little bit about fire, so.
Thank you. Wait a minute, anyone have any questions for him about his portion here? All right, thanks.
I'm Mike Jordan with Collaborative Design Group. As part of the process, we met, as James said, with Chief Christensen and Chief Frye, and developed an understanding of their departments and how their departments work together. We put together a program of space needs based on our experience with other fire departments and fire station facilities. If we look at the two departments as standalone departments, the space needs are almost 10,000 square feet more than if we combine them into a common facility. And what we found was that there's a lot of interaction between the departments. And so in combining them, we're not doubling up on building extra space for each department. And so I think that was an important part of our understanding of why we should probably co-locate at a minimum, fire and police in a single, or excuse me, fire and EMS in a single facility. We took a look at their needs currently in terms of the number of firefighters and paramedics and EMTs and the full-time employees. And we also took a look at what the future short-term growth planning was. We took a look at the existing facility, the existing public safety facility, which has very good bones. It's a precast concrete building with masonry exterior, so it's in, is in very good shape for its age. The limitations, I think, that Steve talked about in terms of the sizes of the bays and the door widths clearly are something that can't really be overcome without fairly extensive remodeling. But some of the things to update there in terms of the remodeling of that space, if it continues to be used as a satellite station, as we were proposing, would be to bring it up to speed in terms of places like, for decontamination of the ambulances and the heavy rescue vehicles, decontamination of firefighters that come back from a scene, and then ADA upgrades for public restrooms and other spaces like that that are part of a modern fire department and EMS department. So I think there's some real economies in retaining that location. It's in a perfect spot for response to the downtown and the northern part of Hudson and North Hudson itself. So it was our recommendation to retain that as a satellite facility, and then to build a new combined facility for EMS and fire department at one of the selected sites. I think from a site standpoint, there are a lot of other considerations that we talked about and included in the report. You know, the sizes and locations of the aprons, the fact that we would want to do drive-through bays as opposed to back-in bays for convenience of the, and safety of the firefighters, looking at the site and location of the site for future expansion by adding engine bays and ambulance bays to the new facility. In terms of the volunteer and part-time nature of the two departments, I think adding firefighters or EMTs really doesn't increase the size of the facility as much as some of the equipment does. And in the case of the equipment, like, likely scenarios are that the equipment would be replaced in kind as it, as it, you know, reaches its, the extent of its life. So in building the facility, we're recommending this combined facility at about 19,000 square feet that would be able to be used for at least 10 to 20 years into the future. Our costs in the last part of the study were in the range of about $205 a square foot. And this is in 2010 spring construction dollars. That would be for construction of a building that's in a 50 to 75-year lifespan building. It would be either steel or concrete frame and masonry exterior and something that will be a long-lasting facility. Like James said, there are some economies of scale in building a single facility. And when it's combined with police, there are some other shared spaces that are available for both departments in terms of a training room that can be served for both volunteer firefighters, EMS department, and for police. And then combining toilet facilities and public restrooms and the exercise facilities for both departments, or for all three departments. We see another economy of scale in terms of combining the facilities. So that's why we arrived at the recommendation to build a single facility that would serve all three departments. Any other questions?
You had a question. You said 19,000 square feet, and here, option C, you talked about 21,000, and a combined of 40,000. So I'm not, I don't, I'm trying to figure out where the 19 came in.
Well, in looking at the separate departments, we've got separate needs for fire of about 17,000 square feet, and for EMS of about 12,000 square feet. But when we combine them together, we save roughly 10,000 square feet in some of the duplicated spaces. And so the fire department and EMS square footage would be roughly 19,000 square feet. And we're talking about roughly 18,000 square feet for police. And then if we include some of the other shared spaces, like I said, training room and exercise room and some of the public restroom, things like that, lobby spaces, that's about another 4,000 square feet. So we're, roughly a total of the entire combined facility of 41,000.
Yeah, about 41,000. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
Lee, I think there was, you know, a couple of spaces that were really in question, too. And for example, a wash bay for the fire apparatus department. And we did include an alternate, I believe, in there indicating the square footage for that. And so, and then, you know, the idea of a training facility, what does that entail? Is it, you know, just the scale of it? So is it all outdoors and how big is it and such? So, you know, there are some variables in those numbers, of course.
Yeah, the onsite training is a real advantage and to, not necessarily a training tower, although those are facilities that can be used by other departments in the area, maybe rented out. But just vehicle extraction type training, chopping training, and fire host deployment and training like that can easily be done onsite if you plan an area for it, probably at the rear of the apparatus bay apron.
Okay, questions? Mr. Peterson, are you back up again, or are you finished?
I'm done unless there's questions, or unless you want to look into something in more detail. We didn't want to take away your whole evening, so.
All right. Council members, you have more questions on this? Lee? No?
I guess I would stress that obviously we're more than happy to entertain questions at your discretion at a later time, but, you know, if something else comes up that the city wants to contact us on, obviously we're.
All right, well, I'd like to make some comments then. I think it's a good report, well done. There are good recommendations in here, some of which I believe we need to immediately explore further. And as background, I'd like to first talk about EMS. I think we have great service. There are clearly some challenges nationwide in what's going on in the provision of emergency medical services right now. It's no surprise to any of you. We've got probably two main problems. One of them is the reimbursement rate from, for our Medicare/Medicaid patients is not really enough to pay, and the other is, we run a lot of calls that we ultimately end up writing off as a bad debt. And that's the same problem everywhere, and it is a somewhat uncertain future for EMS. In regards to this plan, I think it's, I'll endorse this idea right now, is that in the near term, we need more police space, which is probably going to mean vacation of that area down there. And I think it is suitable for EMS in the near term. So that's a, that's a near-term recommendation that I think we need to do, is we need to, we need to get on with that. But we can't really build new facilities for them right now that entail lots of expenditure because it is so uncertain. We may need to be looking at completely different ways to provide that service. And so I'm not in favor of us building a big new building to house ambulance service when we don't know what's going to happen in the next few years. Now, maybe it'll be completely different in a couple of years. The second thing is with the fire department. The fire department, we do have some big challenges there because we are a provider of joint service there to our customers who are our partner municipalities around, and they're in very tight budget conditions. And we are, we really don't have a financing mechanism in place to have them help pay their share of a $5 million facility. We really don't have that. I mean, we get squawking right now when we, for example, want to have a new rig. You know, there's a certain amount of squawk that happens, and that's just the reality of it. Does that mean that we can't do anything to improve the space? I think we can, but we also have to look at the political reality of it, is that that is where we're at. I think we need to have a near-term solution and a long-term solution, and I'm going to encourage the council to take action on both the near-term solution and the long-term solution immediately. And we're going to talk about that some more tonight. One of your considerations that's in the plan is the potential of purchasing the NMC building and repurposing that building. And I'm going to encourage that we explore that further and that we do it immediately. Okay? Does that mean that we're going to buy that building? I don't know, but we need to explore that further. That's one of your recommendations that I think we should immediately pursue further. The second part is for the long term. I think we need to immediately pursue a site for the long term. As part of our short-term plan, we need to get a site for the long term. But the political reality is, we are not going to be building an $8.4 million new facility in 2009 or 2010. We won't be able to do it within our budget. So that's the reality of that. Does that mean that we do nothing about this plan? I don't think so. I would say that I think we need to further explore recommendation number one on page seven immediately. I think that on page eight, both recommendation A and C are things that we need to pursue right now. And I'm going to talk some more with the council about that. The idea about the NMC building is something that we're going to need to talk about. There's a question of cost to purchase it. There's a question of cost to remodel and repurpose the building. But the two biggest space needs we have in the city right now are probably for the library and for the police. Police have got 4,000 square feet, and you're recommending that they should have more like 15, 16, 17, 18, whatever the number is going to be. They need to have more. They need to have more. Library's got 12,000, and they've done a couple of different studies. One says they need 25,000 square feet, one says they need 30,000 to 40,000 square feet. They'd like to have more space. If we could figure out a way to meet those two pressing needs, then I think we should pursue that. And if in the process we get more EMS space than they've got right now, that would be an added bonus. And then we can look at your recommendation, page eight, number A, which is to do some remodeling over across the street and do it at the same time. If we did that, plus the recommendation C to get a long-term site, those are things I think we need to do right away. And later on tonight, I'm going to ask for the council to go into closed session to have some discussion about deliberation regarding negotiation strategies for some of the sites that have been discussed tonight, because I think this isn't a report that we want to just accept and put on the shelf. I'd like to see us take some immediate next steps. So if we have some discussion tonight, then we'll probably be back to talk with you some more about where will we go next here. One of the things that you had in your report was you thought that remodeling of the NMC building would take 1.2 or 1.3 million dollars in order to put the police station in there. I walked through there with some of the police department, and I'll tell you, if we walked in and didn't do much of anything, it'd be a whole lot better than it is right now downstairs in this building. So I think that's something that we might want some more study on, because we can't develop a thorough evaluation of that potential until we've looked at that in some depth.
Sure.
So we probably need to get back together with you. The council have comments on my comments?
Yes, I'd like to let you know that I totally agree that the last thing we want to do is thank RISB for their fine work and then file this away. I think we need to keep it in front of us and act on it. Sooner the better.
I can tell you in regard to your five sites, that, and I'll just go through them briefly as an update for the public on some of them, understanding that negotiations on purchase of property is something that, you know, we try to do everything as openly as we can do for the public to have a right to know. And, but there is a point where we're actually talking about potentially buying one, when we also have a need to protect the interests of the public by doing some of our business in closed session. Otherwise, the price may go up and we have a harder time securing a good value or purchase price. But just to go through these five sites, and these are the raw land sites, or pardon me, not raw land sites, but they're the, the five locations that you had identified on page eight. The first, Vine and Carmichael, which is owned by this, by St. Croix County, we have had some discussions with officials from the county. I believe that there's room for us to come together on a mutually agreeable way for the city to acquire a portion of that land. It's political on their part, just as this will all be political on your part. But for the most part, that's going to happen in a somewhat open process, so I can tell you right now, I'm interested in that corner. I think that for the long-term purposes of the city, we should own a portion of that corner. We have designated it in our comprehensive plan as public use, and that's not just county public use, that could be for other public entities, city certainly being a prime one. It's a good location, and I think we need to enter some discussions with the county about that one right now. The number two, you've got Carmichael Road West, approximately a half mile north of I-94. That is currently not for sale, it's in private hands. I have had some discussion with them. We could certainly have some more. I'm going to talk with the council. If we go into closed session, I'll talk with you more about that in closed, and I can just say that, you know, there's some potential for that. However, number three, the former DOT travel center, I have notified the State Department of Transportation in writing twice of our interest in that, and they've currently ordered an appraisal for it. I believe that we'll be in first position to get that. It's just going to come, the state's not in a position right now with the state budget to give that away. At one point, we thought maybe that we'd get it for a dollar or something. That doesn't look likely. But are we in first position to get it? I believe we are. And I am interested in that site for the long-term needs of the city. Again, we'll need to talk about that as a council, what our strategy will be with that. But I can tell you that I've already taken some steps on trying to secure that site, and I think it's very likely that we could get that site if we want it. The other two down there, I don't have much to say about right now. And I've talked with the, again, the owner of number four. There's some potential room for us to work on that, but frankly, I think we should start at the top of this list. Is this list ranked in any particular order, Steve?
The intention originally was, no, it's not. So, I'd have to go back.
It's not in any particular order. You know, the council should be advised of that, that you kind of, you looked at 30, and these were the top five, and number one isn't necessarily number one. They're all suitable.
They're all suitable. I think obviously there's some pros and cons, and cost has got to play into it, so.
Yeah. You should understand that number, number four is developed property.
Correct.
So we can, we can talk some more about that. But what you evaluated with number four was from, struggling to think of the name of the road that comes out by Burger King. What's that road?
Center Drive.
Center Drive. So, when you say approximately a quarter mile south, you're talking about where the car dealership is, and then vacant land to the south of the car dealership, that parcel. And then for number five, Carmichael Road, I-94, the northeast corner, you're talking the closest to the corner?
Well, any portion of that development. So, and again, that's based more on location within the community and potential access and such. So, does it have to be right on the frontage road or right off of Carmichael, for example? I guess that's open for discussion, so.
Okay, can I ask you, because when you talked about the Sally Port, and obviously you gave some thought to the repurposing of the NMC building. So it seems to me that if we were to do that and use that, there's, there's three potential entrances to that facility where the police to be located in some part of the first floor. And I think what we talked about would be the northwest wing of the first floor. So you'd have the potential to come into the underground parking space and go up. You'd have the public entrance that would be somehow off the lobby area of the main floor. And then you've got a private parking lot area that's near the outdoor chiller and so on. There's like six parking places, and then there's a private entrance into that northwest wing there.
Right.
So that provides three areas to come into. When you talked about bringing in a suspect or a...
Miscreant. Sort of miscreant.
Detainee.
A detainee. I mean, this obviously gives us more options than we've got right now. I mean, do you feel like it's not suitable for any further consideration because there is not enough different ways to get in there?
Yeah, physically toward guts of the building, but I've been out and walked around it and such. You know, just walking around the outside of the building, it has a lot of real positives to it. It has quite a large emergency generator, which is something that a police station needs. It's all secured electronically, so you enter the building electronically, which is another real plus for a police station nowadays, because a lot of their, a lot of their stuff is done through tagging, you know what I mean? So in other words, you can hip-check a thing and get through a door or something and still have somebody kind of wrestled, you know what I mean? And it's got a, an enclosed parking garage below grade. So you enter at first floor, so you have several separations, both horizontally and vertically. So you can enter the building at a vertical level on the first floor and separate those people from the bad guys that would be coming in, let's say, at the sub-level or sub-basement level. So my first instinct or gut is, is that there's a lot of real positives in this building. And it's up to size and scale where I know you can carve out the chunk you needed.
Yeah.
And secure it the right way.
All right, so you use the analogy of a tour of schoolchildren, which we often have in our current facility. I mean, what about if we had a shared building, much like, for example, Baldwin, to our east, a few miles, has a shared facility where they have, you know, police and their village offices, and I think they have their library there.
Right.
And there's a public entrance, and then there's private entrances into the police station. I mean, so is it...
It's not, that happens an awful lot. I live out in the Waconia area, and I think Waconia, if I recall correctly, has kind of a shared kind of lobby area, where you enter the lobby and the police are kind of on one side, city hall's on the other, and then the library's actually part of the entire facility, too. And usually what happens in those cases is that it might be a shared lobby or maybe kind of a separated lobby, but police stations almost always, there's a level of control because of how they deal with their nighttime traffic and such. That involves a secure window usually. And so during the day, there's an administrative sergeant or their administrators that kind of take care of that window operation during the day, and then at night, there are other means to let people in and out. But the biggest thing that's really changed in that front lobby area in police work nowadays is, is to get, try to lessen that kind of fear intimidation level. Lots of the old lobbies were very small and very intimidating, and they've tried to make police stations more inviting and more people-friendly and public-friendly in general, but still provide that level of security. And often that's for the officers as much as anything. So if somebody comes in wildly out of control, you don't want them to be able to gain access back into the main police station without some level of security initially. But you also want it to be very friendly nowadays, too. So, that happens a lot. What you're talking about is kind of co-located or combined facilities, yes.
All right.
And it involves a walk-up counter.
Council, more questions, comments? Lee? Anybody? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda is number C, Preliminary Resolution Number 16-09 for our 2009 Sidewalk Replacement Program Special Assessments.
Move to suspend the rules.
We've got a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Wyland?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Morsett?
Yes.
Brokaw?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
And the motion passes, rules are suspended. Need a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carries, resolution is adopted. I have an appointment to the Hudson Housing Authority Attorney, Joel Porter, longtime attorney, former school board member. I'd like your consent or approval for that. Little bit of a twist, he does not actually reside in the city. The rules for the Hudson Housing Authority do not require that. He's interested in serving, I think could add something to it. You'll remember that the past member that we're replacing was an attorney, so that gives them an attorney presence there again. And so I'd like your approval of Joel Porter to be named to the remainder, or pardon me, to the five-year term for the Hudson Housing Authority.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. So he is approved, and I think we're lucky to have him. I'm happy, thank you. Any communications by any older person? City attorney?
Oh.
City administrator?
Other than, I will make some copies of this report, have them available here at City Hall.
And you have an electronic version of it, would it be possible for it to be somehow on our website by PDF?
It is a PDF, so we, depending on our space availability, we can do that. I'll have Jan do that.
Save ourselves a couple of trees. Anything else? I'd like to ask that we go into closed session pursuant to Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E, Wisconsin Stats to Deliberate Regarding Negotiating Strategy for Possible Purchase of Property Identified in the Public Safety Space and Facilities Feasibility Study for the City's Public Safety Space Needs.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Laurie beat you to it, she was just quieter.
Okay.
Discussion? Roll call?
Virchell?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Brokaw?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Morsett?
Yes.
Motion passes, and we will convene in the closed session.